Being as it is one o'clock, we are going to call the meeting to order of the Clickitack County Board of County Commissioners on two twenty-two twenty-two, known as an Ambiogram and a Pentagram. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, if everybody would stand, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the business agenda as presented.
I would second the motion.
There is a motion to approve the business agenda as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
And I would request we hold the approval of the minutes for after citizen comment. I have time to look over.
Okay. With that being said, we are going to move into citizen comments. Citizens will be allowed three minutes per individual. If you are looking for a response, we will, the board may or may not choose to respond to you at one-twenty-five. And we will begin, as always, in the room, if anybody would like to provide public comment. That is a big no. We will now move online. Please unmute your phone, star six, turn your video on, wave, raise your hand, get our attention somehow, and we would love to hear your public comment. Zero zero eight eight. Please give us your name, if you would, and I need to turn.
Yeah, Delmar Eldred, Golden Dale.
Thank you, Delmar. Please give us your public comment.
Yeah, I would, I would just like to help you guys because of the high cost of public record requests. And Chairman Sodder stated that because of personal information on some of the documents, they have to be verified before they can be sent out to the public. Well, I just wanted to let you know that you can line items, take out information that is not for public consumption before you file it, and that way you can get a, when you get a request, you don't have to spend time scanning it, and that should save you money and time on public information requests. And there is one question that I would like to have the commissioners answer, and that is, the commissioner, have the commissioners fully complied with the state revised codes of Washington in the matter of solar sites and track D? And that is a yes or no question. If you complied, yes, or you have not, no. And that is my comment.
Thank you very much for your comment, Mr. Eldred. We will go back into the room. If anybody would like to provide public comment. Seeing none, we will go back online. Please raise your hand, turn your video on, star six to unmute if you're on your phone. I am not seeing anyone.
Sherry's unmuted.
I've got Sherry Bosque. I think you are first, and then after you will be Elaine Harvey. Sherry.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I have a question today. Who in the county is ultimately in charge of making sure building permits are issued to code? And so I would like a name of that, because I understand that the commissioners took over the code compliance officers. So I would like to know the highest of the hierarchy in our county who oversees to make sure building codes are, and building constructions, reconstructions are being up, are being held to correct code compliance before permitted. So if you could answer that either, you know, at the last five minutes. And also, I wanted to remind our county commissioners that when mitigation, mitigated determinations of non-significance for SEPAs or EISs are not done completely, that leaves our, your citizens, your people of the county, with no other choice to appeal the county decision. And again, I want to reiterate to the people of the county that, under canvas, the appellants are the people. We have, we have gathered our money together to fight against a county decision such as the SEPA mitigation of non-determines. If people don't know what that is, that's something that affects all of us. So I would like, again, to ask our county commissioners to have more oversight of the planning department before these mitigated determinations are released with nothing but a comment to be ignored by the people. And this is coming to us with Cypress Creek Carriage Your Project. And there will be a determination released, and I don't believe that our county planner should be making a determination of an environmental impact so great without having it discussed to the people and the people putting their input on it. Especially, it should not be, it should not be determined prior to going in front of a board of adjustment for a conditional use permit. That should be left for the people to comment on before the decision is made, where it leaves the people nothing but an appeal process. I am asking our county to work with the people, be open with these environmental impacts for these great projects that can harm us forever. And so that's what I'm talking about today, because I'm very upset, because the people are still fighting our county against the conditional use permit and a SEPA that we believe our county has issued in harm to us. And you continue to use taxpayer money to fight against the people of your county, and I'm asking for this to stop, to have more input. And please tell me, who was overseeing code compliance to make sure building permits, reconstruction, whatever, is done correctly? And if it's a state level, please give me that information, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bosque. All right, next, we had Elaine Harvey was unmuted. Elaine Harvey.
Good afternoon, Elaine Harvey Goldendale. Chairman Sodder, I just want to make some clarifications from last week. What happened, the occurrences in the parking lot? I think you guys received my emails, where I submitted an email where I don't understand where a county commissioner is a parking police officer. And I wanted to also make clarification that I was on my lunchtime and that I was not driving a Yakima Nation tribal vehicle. It was my personal SUV with Yakima Nation tribal plates, which we legally can have. I was not on my work hour, and, and Commissioner was not approaching me to talk about intergovernmental relations between Yakima Nation and Clickitack County. Absolutely not. He stalked me. And he went around the block, parked in the alley, and was staring at me. And then he got off his vehicle, and that's where the confrontation where happened. And I just wanted to make this clarification, that this parking issue has nothing to do with Yakima Nation. I was off of my work hours. I was not on a tribal vehicle. And Christopher was, is way out of his way. I mean, there's other tribal, I mean, staff within the county that can, that can take care of these kind of issues. And if he really has a concern, why aren't there any signs? The only signage I see is handicap parking, and I just don't understand where the commissioner can use his hours working for the county as a parking police officer. And, you know, he made the statement that this parking issue can affect the relationship between Yakima Nation and the county. I don't think so. The county's suing Yakima Nation, appealing the track D, and there's many other issues between the tribe and the county. And this little parking issue has nothing to do with it. So I needed to make these clarifications that Christopher had in his emails, and I did see you guys and others who work for the city and, and the county. And I just wanted to, to make this statement, because I really don't appreciate his lies, where he is calling me a liar. And it's probably on video, on the county video, where he stalked me down as a stalker, and that, that's not right. And yes, I do believe it's a race, it comes down to a race issue, because he's not going to chase anybody outside of county parking. And I'm a Clickitack County citizen, so shouldn't I have a right to park there? And last week I had a meeting in the county building, CRM reboot, sure you guys know what that is. I was in the meeting the whole day, from ten to two. So I do go there for personal and official business. So I just want to make that statement.
Thank you, Elaine. Your, your time is up, and we will move on to end the room. Does anybody now wish to give public comment? Hearing none, back online. Star six to unmute yourself, turn your video on, raise your hand, wave at us, try to get our attention somehow. Kaylee, thank you for raising your hand. Your, please give us your name and where you live.
Hi, my name is Kaylee Toll, and I live in Lyle. Thank you for letting me talk. I have been wanting to come on here for a few weeks and just haven't had the chance. I would really like the commissioners to take a good, hard look at our mental health availability in this county, our substance abuse programs. I have a close relative that has been in treatment, and I'm coming back to Clickitack County. There is virtually no mental health programs available. There is no meetings and no substance abuse help in this county at all, and it's very few and far between on the other side of the river, too. So I just, I don't know that the commissioners can do a whole lot, other than we need more than just comprehensive mental health. I also work for the sheriff's office, and the amount of mental health calls that we get every single day is just, has really opened my eyes to what we're missing in this county. So I would love to chat further, or if there's a committee or something that I can do to help get this on your guys' priority list, because this is, you know, drug use and abuse is an absolute killer. It's raising crime in our county, and we just, we really need to take a stand and get these people help. So that's it.
Thank you, Kaylee. All right, next up, back online, based on what I'm seeing from, I'm not seeing anybody. All right, star six, unmute yourself, wave your hand, get our attention somehow, and we will call on you. But so far, I'm not seeing anyone. All right. Well, since nobody is, wants to give public comment, would either of my seatmates like to respond to any of these comments that have been given?
I'll take a stab at a couple. First, I guess I'd ask my seatmates if they had a better, since we are still in citizen comment, maybe one of the earlier commenters can, can clarify, but I was curious from Mr. Eldred's question. I didn't get, I got the RCW and track D, but was it specific to solar projects?
That's what I heard, solar sites and track D.
At least to my knowledge, we have not had any applications for solar projects in the area that we commonly refer to as track D. I would also say for the record that we, I'm unaware of us not that, that we've, the county or individual commissioners, I can't imagine, has ever knowingly violated an RCW in any land use decision. So I'm not sure what this, the significance of that question was. To Ms. Bosque, about who, as far as building codes, as far as the building permits are issued by the county building department, we have a building official, code compliance, which could be, those are allegations of that someone is not following the code, those are actually handled by the code compliance officer, which does answer to the board of commissioners. So I would say if it's the issuing of the permit and, and the requirements for that, that would be the building official. If there is an allegation that codes are not being followed, that allegation would be followed up with the code compliance officer, who, actually both, both answer to the board of commissioners. So ultimately, the board of commissioners would be the ones to ensure compliance. I'm going to stop there and give my seatmates an opportunity as well.
I guess I can, I can clarify a little bit more. When a building permit is received and a building permit is then issued, that is the building director who issues the permit. Once that permit has been issued and construction begins, we then have a building inspector who goes out and inspects to ensure that whatever is being built is being built to code. And they look at that. Once the, and I don't believe that the code compliance officer would become involved until the building permit issuance and construction has been completed. If then sometime down the roads, they move said building, they do something else with the building, that is when code compliance gets involved. But until that, you know, and like with the building, until that occupancy permit is issued, it is all within the building department, not within code compliance. So I hope that helps you, Ms. Bosque.
That does help me a lot. Thank you, Commissioner Anderson. Can you provide me the name of the building director and the building inspector?
The building director is Lynn Ward, and the building inspector can, is usually Gene. And you can go on the website, and it should have you, give you links to connect with the building department.
Yeah, and your contact should be with the building director.
And then after that, you guys would be the next level up?
If you have a problem with a, someone that's not abiding by a building code, you would need to file with the code compliance department.
So if I don't feel like the building department is following building codes while giving permits, I would file that with code compliance?
No, because code compliance is only after the permit is issued.
The occupancy.
The occupancy permit.
So if I feel I don't, if I feel that the building department isn't issuing permits to the codes, who would I go to?
A judge, is my guess.
Not the commissioners of my county?
I, I'm not an expert in building or architecture or engineering, so I don't have those answers.
So that's the end of the line, just building, and then if I don't like that, then I have to take a legal action? Is there any state oversee, overseeing agencies?
Ms. Bosque, I, I suppose if you didn't feel the, because the building official is the one charged in Clickitack County with issuing the permit per their discretion as to, I mean, they, they certainly are required to follow the building codes, which Clickitack County adopts. I suppose if you felt like the building official was not, you know, was ignoring some building code, I mean, ultimately, we, the board of commissioners is their, is their supervisor, so you could raise that issue. But ultimately, if you felt, then yeah, I would say there would, legal action would be the only thing left to you that we, because it would be that we were violating our own code. So I'm unaware of that have, ever having happened, so that's why I think we don't have a, a super easy answer for you. But I would start there.
Okay, what about the county auditor? Do they oversee building permits?
No, ma'am, they do not, and we have other people wishing to give public comment, so.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome. Have a great day. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Tracy McKeon, and I'm from Lyle, Washington, and I am a representative for the Red Cross. I am the fire prevention coordinator for all of the boards, and I am the only volunteer for all of the boards with the Red Cross. I work out of the Cascade Chapter and the Southwest Washington Chapter. Today, I read your agenda in awe, that you would, Clickitack County would try to claim, put in a proclamation for the Red Cross to have March be their, Clickitack County's Red Cross Month. The reason is, it's a Red Cross, is, is, is ran only by donations. So, so they're a national, everybody knows this, but they're a national group, and we pride ourselves on only red cross donations. So typically, March is the Red Cross Month nationally, but for a county to try to claim that as their own, I think that you would need to ask direction from the Red Cross. I did speak with their attorney today, and he has said that they did not receive any sort of direction that he could see from you folks. And I do have an email that I'll, I'll provide you that he would like you to respond to. So, um, has I, oh, my Red Cross account was compromised. It was taken by the person I set it up with, which was the Lyle Fire Department. And I haven't had access to that account since June. It's my own personal account. So it was fire prevention at Lyle Fire, but that is my own personal Red Cross account. And what else I found is, in 2018, so I go with the Red Cross, it's 2017, 2018, I became the coordinator for the board of fire prevention. So this is the, as you possibly already know, Clickitack County Washington Community Wildfire Protection Plan, at 2018. And if you turn to page seven, you see my name as one of the stakeholders in this document. I didn't know this until just a few months ago. And it says, Gracie McKeon, which my name is Tracy, and then it says Clickitack County District Four. I believe that since this branch was fire prevention, that is why I became a stakeholder for, on the page seven of this Clickitack County Washington Community Welfare Protection Plan. Do you folks have any questions?
I have a question. We received an email from a Michael Drake with the Red Cross, the Southwest Washington Chapter, out of Vancouver, to issue this proclamation with a guidance, with their own version of the proclamation on there. So that's where this came from.
Okay, he is my director, and then I spoke above him to the, at the national level. They escalated me up, and then I got a call from the attorney, and that's, he's, he's just asked for you folks to, to contact him.
So are you, are you recommending that we do not follow the directions of Mr. Michael Blake, Drake?
Yes, I recommend that you do not follow his direction until you speak to the national level of the Red Cross. I did try to get ahold of Michael Drake, and I have. And, yeah, I hope I can get my account back.
Thank you, Ms. McKeon. Is there any further public comment online? We will open it up for one more person.
I guess if not, I can wait one more comment to citizen comment to maybe, I don't know why, to try to set the record straight back in. The county is not suing the Yakima Nation over track D. Yakima Nation filed that lawsuit. So just to correct the record, if anybody cares to correct the record.
And we have one more person who wishes to give public comment in the room, so please come forward, sir.
Orin Johnson, Lyle, Washington. Some while back, at one of our community council meetings, I think it was one of the, not code compliance, but it was a nuisance compliance officer by the name of Frank, I can't remember his last name. I understand that he is no longer around, and we have lots of people that have lots of complaints as the county reinstated a person or two or three people to do that job.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I'll answer that. Yes, we, we hired Lim Pratt a good six, eight months ago. He has taken on all of the caseload from his predecessor, and I think he is down to under twenty cases right now, so. If you have a code compliance issue or a nuisance compliance type issue, yeah, I would contact him and file a complaint. It may be one he's already working on.
All right, well, he, he did leave us a stack of, or forms to fill out, but I was unaware of it, so now I know, and we'll make sure that they get out.
Yep, perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're not the only one. I have a, some group in Centerville that wants a stack, too, so.
Yes, ma'am.
When the public addresses the board, they need to come up and speak into the mic.
Yes. Thank you. I will try to do better. All right, would either of my seatmates like to respond to anyone else?
I would just, comment just to add my support, and I know the support of the board as far as, to the issue that Ms. Toll brought up, as far as mental health services and the availability at our, you know, morning briefing from jail, jail superintendent, law enforcement, and the sheriff, you know, that is a huge issue, not just in Clickitack County, but across, that, you know, we're, you know, that their estimate was that fifty percent of our inmates in the jail currently have some form of mental health issue that needs services, and it is, it is very difficult to access services in the region. So I'm not sure what role, other than, you know, advocating and bringing it up and trying to get the folks, the, I, at the state level to, to pay attention to this. So I just want to say, I, I hear you. I, I understand it. I don't think there's a family in the county that's not touched in one form or another with mental health issues.
Thank you, Commissioner Sodder.
Anything else?
I did want to clarify, too. We had two, two commenters today that referred to the, to myself as the chairman. Obviously, I'm not sitting in the middle seat. I am, I am not, there is no Chairman Sodder. It's Chairman Anderson. I assume that was just a misunderstanding from, or maybe they were referring in the past as far as to incidences in the previous year.
Oh, you can have it again, if you don't, I'm good.
I like my chair over here on the right.
Anderson?
Oh, Ms. Harvey?
Yeah, I, my camera is so tiny, I couldn't even tell who's who in, in the seat. That's why I thought Sauter was still chairman or whatever.
Not a problem. Um, may you and I both wish he were. Okay, being 1:30, we are going to close Citizen Comment. I would like to say thank you to everyone who, uh, provided comment, who ensured to keep it respectful and polite. That is what we like and appreciate, and, uh, I look forward to hearing what you all have to say next week. Uh, would we like to move back to the meeting minutes?
Um, yeah, I'm ready if everybody else is ready.
Please be.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I make move, motion that we approve the meeting minutes from January 25th, 2022, and February 1st, 2022, as presented.
I'll second the motion.
There's a motion and a second to approve the minutes from January 25th and from February 1st, 2022. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay. We have an opening for a request for proposals for the backup, but I am not seeing Jeff. Wouldn't it be Jeff?
Jeff King.
Jeff Rowe. No, Jeff Rowe. Oh, I believe. Okay.
Jeff saying that they did not receive any proposals.
No proposals. Okay. Well, that's probably why he's not here. Yeah. Okay. Casey, come on forward. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. We are here. Lynn actually has a vacant position in her department for the Plans Examiner one or two position. She'd like to post for the Plans Examiner one, steps one through three. Um, it is fully funded within her budget, and we're just here to get the verbal.
Any questions?
I would like to point out that this, uh, position is fully funded with building department, building fees, so it's not taxpayer dollars to fund this position.
Any comments?
Just one of the folks that writes those checks sometimes. I, I want a Plans Examiner so I could get my permits done in a reasonable length of time.
We thank you.
Yes, yes.
So, so right now, it is falling all on you then. You're doing.
That would be correct.
Well, then you better get it posted as soon as possible. Got a thumbs up from all of us. Thank you, ladies. Have a great day. Okay, um, I was gonna say, why don't we move on to the consent?
Would you, uh, have any interest in, uh, a motion to approve two through six pulling item one, which is the Red Cross, while we have staff reach out to, um, Mr. Michael Drake to make sure that he still approves of this doing this?
I will repeat, um, do you want a consent agenda items one through six, or do you want two through six, pulling item number one, uh, until we can re, reach further clarification, because that is in March, and we are.
I would be okay, just in the, I guess, the interest of just being sure, thorough. I, I appreciate that you were able to pull up the, the email as far as where the request came from, but I, I don't see any problem with delaying a week until we get,
Confirmation.
Confirmation, um, that they in fact do want us, we're, um, so I would be fine with that if you want to make the motion, sir.
You okay with that?
Whatever you want to do.
All right. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve consent agenda items number two through six, pulling item number one, which is the Red Cross proclamation, until, um, follow-up with the Red Cross can be done.
I'll second the motion.
There is a motion and a second to approve items two through six on the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Sure.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve accounts payable warrants in the amount of $300,901.28 for the date ending February 22nd, 2022.
I would second the motion.
There is a motion and a second to approve the bills. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, we still have 20 minutes before that one that people are starting to show up on, so.
Or you just announce that we're gonna get to it early, and they'll start running across the street.
You could send them a chat.
Yeah.
A chat off.
So if anybody's listening and wants to talk about the chat, they might want to run over early, because we're gonna talk about it early.
Come on.
It was funny. It was funny.
It, it was funny. I'll give you that.
It's hard with masks on. You don't know.
No, 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 you don't have to sign that. I just said, look at that.
That it's not signed? Is that what I'm looking at?
No, no, no.
Am I looking at items?
No, no, we're, we're, it is signed.
Oh, got it.
That one still.
I just pulled it out.
Oh, good, yeah. Throw it away. Yeah, throw it away, because I probably. Hmm?
Which one does this go in?
I think that goes in there. Well, they're starting to show up now. Since we have 10 minutes, is there any board pending that either of you gentlemen would like to talk about? Um, I would just update that it looks like the legislation in Oregon for the bridge is passed, passing. Heading to the governor, and that the, no, no, that, no, that is for the, um, enabling, uh, enabling legislation. But then the governor of Oregon sent the governor of Washington, uh, a letter requesting that the governor support the bridge replacement process in the gorge, um, and to get, put funding towards it. So that was unexpected and really good for her to send that. Thank you, sir. Thank you for all of your hard work from the Dells.
Different bridge you realize.
Yours is still closed on the weekends.
You're not welcome.
But we can put a toll on it to help pay for it if you'd like. Okay, do you have any board pending? All right, um, it is 1:38, and I think we have enough people in here to begin this conversation. Uh, this is the follow-up discussion from February 15th, 2022, and the Commissioner's motion to disconnect the Google Drive chat feature. Would either of you like to head this off?
Yes, Mr. Christopher, um, upon, in my opinion, uh, which is solely one person's opinion, so I will only leave it at one person. I believe this commissioner, um, acted, uh, draconiously and, and prematurely without seeking, uh, directors and electeds' input on this, and for that, I would apologize to him. With that, um, I don't know where you guys all are, but, um, I'm kind of thinking this is more of a, a management issue that we might be able to fix without, uh, shutting it all off everywhere, and we could just send email reminders and whatnot for people to, uh, be careful, do a little policing, and move forward later if we need to move forward. So my recommendation at this point, having not heard any new testimony yet, uh, would be to remove the, um, motion that was made last week.
Commissioner Sauter?
Uh, I, I would like to actually hear from folks, I think, first. I, I'm not disagreeing with anything you said necessarily, but I would like, we got folks in here, and I do want to hear how, because I do have concerns, again, concerns, um, about the liability and, um, how, how the functions get used, just the same concerns I have with everything. It sounds like the auditor is gonna be the first one up, so that's good.
Yes, uh, we will, we want to get it recorded, and so please, everybody come up to the chair, and if there's somebody else who's, wants to speak next, come on up and sit next to her.
So I had an opportunity to speak with your two seatmates. I left you a message, and we haven't connected yet on your phone in the office today.
Oh, the landline?
Yes, the landline. I know, what a novel thought. So my thought is, I actually use that for work this morning, and that's part of my issue. That's a tool that we're used to using. You have an IT policy that says, um, it's not to be used for personal use. You can access the chat messages by looking at all mail. I think it's more of a, an administration issue. If you have concerns with the department, you can have IT pull their information and take a look and see, see if there's compliance. Personally, I don't feel we need to have a rule from, an additional rule in addition to the IT policy to tell us what we should or shouldn't do. We use it every day for a tool, every day, multiple times a day. So that's what I have to say. I have plenty more to say, but not now.
Any questions for the auditor while she's up here?
Yes, uh, remind me, I think when we chatted about this last week, you said that you were willing to at least monitor, oversee your staff to make sure nobody was abusing. Is that correct? Or was that somebody else that I talked to that?
Yeah, it might have been someone else. What I said was, if I feel there's a problem, I will review it and look into it.
Okay, okay.
Um, I don't see that I need to review every single one of my employees when I know they're using it as a tool.
Okay, just clarification. Thank you, ma'am.
Yep, you're welcome. Thank you.
Any questions? Ms. Clerk?
We're gonna work on this together. Um, so we have used the tool for security issues within the courtroom. We had an incident last Thursday where my clerks became very concerned about an individual who was, um, about ready to be found in contempt of court. It was a family law matter, and felt that we needed to have additional people in the courtroom. And so chat went out, um, are you watching this? And between the two clerks, um, made a determination that, yes, we need to reach out to the control board and got, um, two additional security officers up there. So we use it in the courtroom to chat back and forth to make sure for that reason. And then also, if a document is needed for the judge, we use it for that as well. So it's a tool that we use inside the courtroom to, um, facilitate court business.
As does Superior Court. So we monitor everything that goes on, but sometimes we don't hear what's happening. And so if the clerk can send us a quick message that the system's going down or that somebody's having an issue, then we could respond right away. So we use it all the time for that.
Any questions for?
If I could, just because I don't really, I, I don't really use it a lot. So I'm in, in that circumstance and the other circumstances, is there, um, is there some efficiency or it's easier than just, because I'm assuming you have your access to email when you're in the court, when you're, so is it just quicker, it's easier than just sending? Because we do send emails back and forth.
Well, it automatically will pop up on your screen, so, um, it automatically alerts you that you have a message from another person.
Right.
Okay.
Right, exactly.
Okay.
It's more of a visual on your screen.
Any, any other questions? All right, thank you. Ms. Bartley?
From, and one of the areas that I use it would be more of like our financial systems, um, system administration tool. So our system administrator Pam and I constantly use chat almost daily, I would say. Um, we are dealing with issues within Cuyana probably weekly. We will be on the phone, talking to each other while we're each trying to troubleshoot, uh, issue, sending snippets, screenshots to each other, dropping it in, in the instant message chat feature, because it is quicker than an email, and it doesn't clutter up your email box. It all still saves in the thread, um, for public records and whatnot, but you don't have to clutter up your email box. You don't have to hit the refresh button and wait for it to come through. So it is extremely helpful when it's dealing with system issues, so I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Prosecutor Canal, anything you'd like to say? Okay. Um, anyone on the Zoom world that is a county employee, not a citizen, a county employee, you can unmute yourself, uh, turn on your camera, wave your hand. All right, I am not seeing any. Carmen?
Hi there. As, as we discussed in our update, um, we also communicate with Superior Court and the clerk's office during court, and the East District Court and West District Court utilizing that chat. So it is really important for us to still have that tool available.
Thank you, Carmen. Discussion, seatmates. Make sure you press your little green button.
If you always like me to start, I'll start. Uh, Mr. Christopher, again, um, as stated in my earlier statement, um, I think that the testimony for me just reaffirms my stance that I gave earlier.
Commissioner Sauter?
Yeah, I would say based on the, um, comments that I've gotten from folks, I would be willing to rescind it with the understanding that this is a management issue, that we are, as a board, we are charged with, uh, trying to limit our liability, and we, we do from folks, whether it's, whether it's chat functions, text messages on phones. We have had multiple trainings and about how to, or not, I mean, we basically don't want people using those, uh, because every time we're creating another record, we increase our potential liability. And so anything that we can do to limit creation of, of records as far as that are, and I don't want to say that as far as like records are bad, they're not, but as far as on multiple platforms, it just makes it a lot more complicated to manage. And so I would agree, this is really more of a management issue that we likely have, you know, hopefully only a few folks that we've had issues with, and I would say the vast majority of people use the function fine, they do it appropriately, and there's not an issue. And so I guess we shouldn't punish the many for the sins of the few, especially now that I do understand how it gets used, that it's not, it's not necessarily just a convenience. It's really necessary that, you know, it's kind of integrated into the general operations of people's offices. And so I would be fine with reversing ourselves.
Commissioner Christopher.
Yeah, and I would agree with all of that, and that's kind of, upon further education after our meeting last week, I think that it is used in a productivity and efficiency kind of way, and since we're trying to streamline that, it seems like we'd be handcuffing ourselves to remove a tool that's used to help people to do their jobs.
Assessor, do you have anything? Oh, Pam, I'm sorry, I can't see from here. I was just assuming. Sorry, Pam.
I just wanted to say, I use it all the time. So we send messages back from courts that if somebody is doing something, especially if you're on a phone call, and you have questions, it's easy to ask somebody instead of saying, let me get back to you. You can ask them, they can respond right away. It's been very helpful.
Thank you, and I was not trying to push a new position on you. To, okay. Well, we will wait for him, and while we're waiting for him, I would like to say, as I said when we made the the choice, oh, we got one more, too. Well, now we can just have a full-on meeting about everything else we need to talk about, since we got everybody here. I was I was reluctantly in favor of it based on may I speak, gentlemen? I was reluctantly in favor based on the potential for liability. I also did not know the extent and the rationale that people were using it in other elected positions. I've always said, you know, I'm in favor of technology that makes our jobs faster, more efficient, and better, and safer. I've also have to look at the liability of the situation as well. In order for me to change my decision, I would like for HR and our IT department to come up with some sort of plan for IT giving our directors, and if the electeds would like, maybe every quarter or twice a year, kind of an overview of what is being said on the chat, so that if you don't know, you don't know. And it is a liability, but as long as we institute those sort of safety measures and safety nets in place, then I feel okay in, you know, changing it. The way it was, the way it was worded last Tuesday was is that you could come back and say, hey, I have a really good reason, and this is it. Well, I just had multiple electeds and department heads say, hey, we use it, and this is a really good reason, and of course, we would bless that reason and rationale. But with considering that every department uses it, I know Director Quinn isn't on, oh, I guess she is, but I know her staff use it as well, and if Greg, if you'd like to make a case, happy to hear from it. Or if you don't want it, and you want it turned off, you can say that, too. And if Jeff King, if you're there, if you'd like to say anything before I hear a motion, speak now or forever hold your peace.
I am not in favor in shutting it off wholesale. It is a useful tool.
Thank you, sir. I had mine off. Now it's on.
Getting closer. Okay, and knowing that from the IT department, we can't shut individuals off, we have to do it, you know, group by group, or that's, that makes it really difficult. Technology is that way. I hate being that close. I would entertain a motion if either of my seatmates would be so moved.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we rescind the motion from last week to shut off the chat feature.
I'll second the motion.
There is a motion, a second, to rescind the motion from last week, turning off the chat feature. Any further discussion?
Just, again, leave it, you know, that it's an option for department directors or electeds. If you don't feel like you need it or don't want it, you know, IT can shut it off, but it's department by department.
I will accept the amendment to the motion.
Good luck, I'd be writing that one down. I would just like to also reiterate and ask you guys on the discussion side, is that something you feel in terms of managing the risk and the liability to have IT every, I don't, three to six months, look through the chat feature, send it to the director, department head, so that they know what's going on if they choose to look through it. But again, it's a management issue.
Correct, but I also think we should be sending out reminders via email or chat countywide to get people cognizant of what they're doing, and maybe just send them a little reminder that you might not be, want to talk about zucchini bread in the chat feature.
Yeah, I mean, I'm fine. I don't, I guess, are you looking to make that like a task that we give IT to just do it, or that that's available if a director or an elected asks for it? Or are you more concerned if they don't, if we don't, if they don't just do it, they won't ask for it?
That's my concern is, is if they don't do it, they won't ask for it, because we all have other things.
I don't want to create a bunch of work for IT, but maybe I can do something. I saw two hands.
Can you come forward?
Department heads have the ability to manage that on a day-to-day basis if they get IT to set up what's called the vault, and they can manage it on a day-to-day basis if they think they have concerns within their own department. So there are management tools already in place for that to happen. And if I'm incorrect in that, and I have been able to do that myself within my department and manage that, so.
And I think that's where I'm going with ongoing discussions with IT is more of a director or elected management of their department.
Agreed.
This is Jeff from IT.
Jeff?
So all departments should have their public records person has access to the vault. So they should all have the ability to review these.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. Prosecutor Canal, did you have your hand raised? Okay. Come forward.
I agree with the prosecutor. When I had an issue a few years back with one of my staff, I just asked that their records be pulled, and then I went through them. I don't feel another department should be looking at them and deciding what should or shouldn't come to me.
For an elected, I agree.
Well, yeah, departments, that's your thing.
Yes, sir.
As administrators of the system, IT has access to all that information all the time. Whether they go through the PA stuff or not, isn't the issue. They have automatic access to it by virtue of being the administrator. PA's office doesn't use chat, so there'd be no chats to go through. So, I mean, I agree with Brenda. I don't want IT to have to be the ones to determine what's an inappropriate discussion. If you're talking about management accountability, at least on the, those who report to you, make the directors be accountable. And use the vault feature that they already have to go through those and not delegate that.
Right, and that's what I'm thinking.
Okay, hearing nothing else, all those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Now that they're all here, is there, what did you guys really want to talk about?
We did just get an email from Mr. Michael Drake. I won't go into detail, but he would like us to make the proclamation. So I don't know whether you want another consent agenda motion now, or hold it over for next week.
Yeah, go ahead. I would entertain a motion.
You good, David?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve consent agenda item one, the Red Cross proclamation.
I'll second the motion.
There is a motion and a second to approve agenda item number one on the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Well, since everybody's in the room, is there anything any of you would like to talk about under board pending?
Chat about it later.
Oh, that was a good one.
Because we might be reading them, except for you electeds, we're not reading it.
Yes, Lynn.
I need to push the green button.
Is it green?
It's green.
Then you can talk.
Okay, I just want to clarify that I have been assisting people with information regarding building permits. There is the Washington State Building Co. Council that someone can chat with if they have additional questions. So I just wanted to throw that out there.
Correct. Thank you for the clarification, and I cannot tell if Ms. Bosque is still online to hear about that. Did you let Ms. Bosque know that previously? Okay, I didn't know if you'd already sent that previously to her. Got it. Yes, that's what I thought. Director Lindblad, is there something you have that you'd like to discuss? Two oh two, sure.
So that was the question posed to the planning department as to if we need to update our fee schedule, our SEPA ordinance, or our zoning ordinance, what kind of timeline, and what kind of process we have to go through. So I did spend some time to look through what the requirements are. So for the fee ordinance, if the board wants the planning department to pick up the project again, because we put that on hold last March, we can strongly do that, because that is something to basically, like a procedural-type action, that we're not changing anything to the environment, so to speak. So it's going to be SEPA exempt, and if it's not required, to go through the planning commission. It's just something that we need to have a public hearing, but that can go straight to the Board of County Commissioner to do that. Same procedure applied to the SEPA ordinance, because it is regulated under RCW forty-three dot twenty-one, and so we do not need to take the SEPA ordinance before the planning commission either. So if the board wants the planning department to go ahead and update or provide clarification to some sections of the ordinance, it will be SEPA exempt, and again, we need to have a public hearing before the commissioners and allow the public to comment on it, and then we can go through the process.
The SEPA is exempt from SEPA?
Yes, it's a procedural-type question, and so it's specific in the WAC. We'll, if that's something the board wants the planning department to do, we just shift our priority, and then we can.
Do you feel that the SEPA ordinance needs updating based on changes at the state level, or changes of policy direction internally?
I think there's always a discussion, because the last round we did the update was back in the nineties. So, for example, right now, you know, SEPA ordinance, we allow for administrative appeal process, meaning anyone disagree with the determination of the SEPA responsible official, they can appeal that to the board administratively. So we can continue to have that offer. However, you know, there's another option is, we do not require to provide the administrative appeal process. Anyone wants to appeal to that determination, they can actually appeal to Superior Court with the underlying action. So for the last, like, five, ten years, we've seen that multiple times that it's great to have an appeal, like an administrative appeal process to allow citizens to voice their concern and kind of have the planning department to take another look at this determination. However, you know, a lot of time, they might use it as a way to add additional time to the process, because at the end of the day, they still appeal that to Superior Court. It just add more cost and more time to while we're processing the permit. So I can see the advantage and disadvantage of both. So I think that might warrant some discussion with the board to decide whether we should continue to offer this option or not. So things like that, we can strongly look into, we can, I can look through the code and provide some recommendation for additional discussion.
Mr. Christopher.
As, it sounds like all this is middle of the nineties, I would recommend that we do that and have our work with the prosecutor, because laws could have changed since the middle of the nineties, to make sure we have our eyes dotted and our keys crossed.
Yeah, I think I'd be in favor of, you know, doing what we can do, because I know just for myself, even there's some aspects in our current, as far as the SEPA, that need clarified, and I think it's not necessarily, wouldn't even necessarily be a change, but I think it needs to be, because part of it's been by practice, like what our understanding is, and I don't think that's a good idea, because I think your understanding, right, put it down in writing. And so I'm in favor of anything that we can do that. And so I would be, and also with the fee ordinance, too, I think things that we can do, again, those have not been updated for some time. I think there's, I think now, I am cognizant of the workload, though, also on the department, where you're, especially you have a tendency to say, yea, yea, oh, of course, yes, sir, may I have another? But I know there's, there, that means something else isn't going to happen, because it just can't. And so, but I do think this is a, should be a high priority, and I would really look forward to what your recommendations, because nobody knows the code, of the four of us, maybe the five in the room, you know it the best, and so I will definitely be interested in what you see as things that we could clarify, update, things that have been an issue in the past that we could do. So I would be very interested in your recommendations.
And I believe that, you know, things have changed since the nineties. The way people, you ever had, you had here? The way people go about, you know, commenting, the way people go about these processes have changed since the nineties, and my question, my most important question is, does the prosecuting attorney's office currently have the bandwidth in order to work and help you through this SEPA ordinance update process? And with that being the case, the answer is yes, here.
Okay, so one clarification in terms of this fee schedule. Because right now, a lot of services or functions that planning department does, we do not necessarily charge to do that. So while we are going to update the fee schedule, would you like me to look at the So while we are going to update the fee schedule, would you like me to look at the fee that we're currently charging citizen? Or should I do a more comprehensive in terms of looking at, you know, where, which area that we possibly find that is reasonable or fair to charge? Because we do spend a lot of time doing something that we don't necessarily asking for fee.
Do you have examples?
Building permits reveal, addressing, change of road name, pre-application conferences, legal law determinations, things like that, those are all important functions of the department. You kind of help determine what can happen onto the property. Some is simple, we can easily tell the answer, but others, we do need to spend quite a bit of time to do your research. So it's difficult to say if they are all, you know.
Do, do other counties tend to charge for those services?
Yes.
Then I would recommend we look into it.
Commissioner Sotter?
Yeah, I would, I would support if it's not a ton of work, looking at what, how other counties do it. I know, and we've, you know, that's one of the benefits of have been, been here for a while. I was party to some conversations in the distant past when dinosaurs roamed the earth. Not, well, actually, yeah, I was around in the nineties, I wasn't here. But that, you know, there was consideration given to, you know, keeping the fees as low as possible or just not charging for things. And again, the circumstances have changed, the economic situations have changed from the nineties in the two thousands to today. And so I'm, I'm open to looking at kind of how other counties are doing it and then, you know, modifying what we, you know, and make it fit for us. I'm not saying, oh, just take, you know, take Yakima or take Kitata or, and we're, we're going to do it like that. But that's really a starting point, you don't have to reinvent the wheel. I want to see how other folks are doing it.
But I don't, I also don't want to necessarily slow down the process.
No.
Okay, let, let me go back and maybe have a proposal back and then we can maybe have further discussion based on the research that I did.
This issue can be brought back later if need be, I don't want to hinder movement.
Okay, and then just one last item here is if we end up wanting to update our zoning ordinance, that one would require to go before the planning commission? And so it would be, it would take more time than, you know, compared to update to the other ordinances that we just talked about. Depending on the changes that we are going to make, it may exempt from SEPA or it may not. So just something so you know.
I will most still stick around, hold in my opinion.
Zoning, zoning.
Yeah, I would hold on to zoning and just work on the other parts.
All right now.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, that's all I have.
All right, any other final questions, Amoji?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Amoji. Casey, do you have anything for us? Got it. Brenda, do you have anything else for us? Okay, we are going to move into elected officials' report. Prosecuting attorney David Canal, do you have anything for the open session? Okay, so what we're going to let everyone know is, is that the Board of County Commissioners will be meeting at five thirty via Zoom for the Clickatuck County Public Economic Development Authority Board meeting that will be held via Zoom and that, yes, maybe? We, we approve the bills. He made the motion, he seconded it. Okay, and that will begin at five thirty and we have no other business. So we will be shutting the Zoom down for executive session and when we reopen, all we will do. So thank you for logging on to your favorite TV show of the week in Clickatuck County. Prosecuting attorney, how long will you need in executive session? There'll be two, two separate. Okay, we are going to, give me a time so I can say.
Ten minutes?
Ten minutes. We will be entering into executive session in accordance with RCW forty-two dot three zero dot one one zero. One I for issues of a general nature will be discussed, well, for pending issues. So G, so it's G for executive session. Issues of a general nature will be discussed in open session. And we will see everyone, we have no meeting on Thursday, so we will see everyone next Tuesday. Thank you and have a great day.